Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us in this miserable weather. Please let the record reflect that all board members with the exception of Mr. Brady and Mrs. LaRosa are present. Any announcements? Any members of the public wishing to speak under your jetpack? Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes contained in your backup? Hello, sir. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Recognition, first.
Thank you, Ms. Fadella. We're going out front. The New York State School Board Association recognizes October 22nd through 26th as School Board Recognition Week. This gives us as a district this month to promote awareness and understanding of the important work that is done by all of our board members. West Islewood is joining all public school districts across New York State to celebrate School Board Recognition Week to honor our board members for their commitment to West Islewood and its children. It takes strong schools to build a strong community. And, Ms. Fadella, Mrs. LaRosa, who could not join us here tonight, Mr. Antonello, Mr. Brady, who could not be here, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Mahalik, and Mr. O'Connor devote countless hours to making sure our schools are helping every child to learn at a higher level. They're faced with tough decisions each month and I am given the... I don't even know how to describe it, but to entrust me with that opportunity to work with them is such a gift. And I realize the countless hours that they spend making decisions on behalf of your children and dealing with some of the education issues that are not easy in this 2018 world. So, on behalf of the West Islewood Union Free School District and our entire community of students and staff and the community at large, I'd like to present you with this certificate which reads "In recognition of your tireless dedication, service, and enduring commitment to the students, faculty, and community members of the West Islewood Union Free School District." Congratulations. The board members can come up and take a picture.
Because it certainly sends a board of education and so it's not just me, although I'm the one that gets the stamp here.
Our regular camera won't be here then. We appreciate that. Mrs. Chris Cassi, she invited us. Can you still get to the camera? Oh, alright. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, personnel, first.
Thank you, Mr. Fadella. I have a motion to approve the resignation of Christine Rosati, Cafeteria 8, effective October 6, 2018.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
I have a motion to approve probationary appointment of Mrs. Laura Maintenance, Manicore, effective November 5, 2018.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
I have a motion for the approval of the bulk advices to 2018-19 for the high school, Beach Street, Bayview, District-wide, Manitowoc, Openoak, and Boljakee Blue as listed in your backup.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
I have a motion for the approval of the mentor program coordinator and mentors with 2018-19 school year as listed in your backup.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
I have a motion for the approval of the 2018-19 early winter middle school coaches as listed in your backup.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
And I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed in your backup.
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you, first. And, first.
Thank you, Ms. Fadella. So, Dr. Doolan could not be here tonight, but she left me some notes that she wanted to be sure that we had an opportunity to share with you. So, I am pleased to announce that 12 students from our middle and high schools will participate in the award-winning annual ambassador program. In its 10th year and under the direction of the Town of Islewood Anti-Bias Task Force, the four-session program addresses bias, prejudice, discrimination, and bullying. Attending students are given the opportunity to meet students from other Town of Islewood school districts and experience guest speakers and workshops that will provide them with the tools they need to assist in combating issues in their own, hour-long district. We are extremely proud of these students and are looking forward to the implementation of their projects as student leaders in their respective school buildings. And we'll keep you informed as this rolls out. The voting for the name of the West Islewood Literacy Line is in, and Leo wins. Leo would like to give a special thanks to all of his friends, and there were almost 100 of them, who took time after vote and shared their favorite reading habits. On October 24th, we will be celebrating We Love Books Day in our elementary schools. Students, teachers, administrators, and parents are encouraged to share a special book with a good friend or a family member. And finally, be reminded that the district is offering a parent academy which will provide workshops on myriad topics throughout the year. The district offered a workshop on K-2 dimensions math programs this past Tuesday, and the feedback has been quite positive. Upcoming academies include a parent Michael Education Workshop. Same workshop will be held next week on Wednesday night and Thursday night. That's October 17th and 18th. And there will also be literacy nights held for K-1 parents in each of the elementary buildings in November. This is just the beginning. We have quite a few more things lined up that we'll be informing you of as they are finalized. I'm for sure we send emails to parents, and they also be found on the district website.
Thank you, first. And, Mr. Mahalik, we'll discuss the meeting of the finance committee.
Good evening. Finance Committee met on October 9th, 2018. Committee members present were Scott Brady, Barney McGinnis, and myself. Board members in attendance were Steve Fadella, Richard Antonello, and Kevin O'Connor. Administrator's present, Bernard Burns, superintendent. And Elisa Piladi, assistant superintendent of business. Others present was Deborah Vowen of Treasury and Pat Crawford, our internal claims boarder. Purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the month and discussion of pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting started at 8:10. First thing we talked about was the treasuries report. We went over the school district funds, and for June and July, we had it revised. And we went over August. Extra curricular funds, we went through May, June, July, and August. And this was presented and accepted by the committee. Next was the payroll summary report for August 2018 that was presented and accepted by the committee. Financial statements for June 2018 were presented and accepted by the committee. The internal claims audit report for September 2018 was presented and accepted by the committee. Assistant manager audit trail for September 2018 was presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll certification for 9/21 and 10/5 were presented and accepted by the committee. We did the review of the warrants, climate, and the finance committee received the warrants. We reviewed the board agenda on certain financing items. We had approval of budget transfers that were presented and accepted by the committee for submission to the board. We had approval of a donation by Abel L.I.T. USA in $1,913.08. We had the approval of a resolution increase for 2018-2019 budget. We had approval of certain surplus items. In English language charts, we had headsets of 59 Explorer by Talbot's Gray headsets, 20 MPC educational systems, MX300 SM, a 600 ohm in white. We had library books at Beach Street Middle School. In technology, we had miscellaneous IT and AV equipment. Beach Street Middle School, we had 54 old library chairs. In the music department high school, we had two three-quarter side-string basses, model Otto Crunstall, serial number 07082210, and a Leon Albert serial number 18626. We had the approval of chain orders. We had a total of four of them, and all of them with Arrow Steel window port. One was for $2,955 at Bayview, $5,310 at Manitowoc, $6,785 at Openoak, and $4,475 at Udo. We had the approval of the 2018-2019 contracts for the ACLD Long Island Select Healthcare. And we had some discussion items where Elisa Piladi informed the committee that the external orders have completed their field work, and the district is now drafting our year-end financial statements. Fund balance for the 2017-18 was discussed, as well as the amounts that will be allocated to the district's reserves at the end of the year. A historical fund balance analysis and a reserve plan was also provided to the committee, which I must say was very helpful. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:40 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalik. And, Mr. O'Connor, we'll discuss the meeting of the buildings in Rastville.
Good evening, everybody. The Buildings Round Committee met this past Tuesday, October 9th, here at District Office. Committee members present were myself, Mr. Brady, and Mr. Mahalik. Board members in attendance were Mr. Fadella, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. Antonello. Administrator's present were Mr. Burns, Mr. Bossi, and Mrs. Piladi. Others present included representatives from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. And the meeting was called to order at 8:45 P.M. The meeting started with representatives from New York State D.C., who met with the committee to discuss the Willits Creek remediation. This is a significant job in size and scope and will impact the district's property on the east side of both Beach Middle School and the high school. Upon completion of the work, D.C. will return the property to its current condition. This work is currently scheduled to begin in July 2019. And Beach, uh, work at Beach Street is scheduled to be completed in November 2019. Work at the high school will go from July 2019 tentatively through May 2020. Next Tuesday, October 16th, D.C. will be holding a public meeting at 7:00 P.M. in the high school auditorium to discuss this work and take comments and questions from the public. A fact sheet from D.C. on this upcoming meeting is available on the district website under Community Flyers. And the committee has advised D.C. that the health and safety of our students, staff, and visitors is of the highest priority. Uh, we encourage everyone to go to the meeting next Tuesday. Next, Mr. Bossi presented his bond expenditure review findings. We are currently running under budget on bond work, which is good and which will allow the committee some flexibility in doing some additional work. This will be an ongoing discussion, future being changed. The West Islewood Soccer Club has offered a donation to pay the cost to install electric in the area between the main turf field and the new turf field on Marvin. The committee approved this work for submission to the board at a later date. Westbrook, one of our tenants, Divine Rhythms, has requested to lease an additional room, and the committee has approved this also for submission to the board. Mr. Bossi reported that a number of the buildings in the district are experiencing moisture problems this fall. Each building is being addressed individually to address the problem. And lastly, the committee was advised that the school boards for the new turf field and school boards for both middle school gyms are expected to be installed by the end of the month. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:40 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And, Mr. McGinnis, we'll discuss the meeting of the committee on special ed and preschool special.
Thank you. The committee met today. Committee members present were myself and Henry LaRosa, administrator's present, Jean Ballard, director of special education. As always, we reviewed the CSE and CPSC recommendations for the month. All was in order. Uh, we discussed several student placements, as well as talked about having a tour of some of our classroom settings and some of our buildings on October 17th. So, I look forward to that. We've done that a couple times, and it was great to be out and see the different classroom settings. And we also discussed potentially looking into participating in a Section 11 program where, for basketball, where some special education students and typical students will play together in a league in the spring, where there's about six games in the playoffs. So, if that's something we could do, that would be great. The committee, the meeting ended at 8:30.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. And, Mr. O'Connor, we'll discuss the policy committee.
Thank you. Policy committee met tonight, right before this meeting here at District Office. President was myself, Mr. Fadella, Mr. Mahalik, Mr. Antonello, Mr. Burns, Mrs. Piladi. The policy under review tonight is Section 6000 slash personnel, Section 6121, which is sexual harassment. Uh, the policy has been amended to bring it into accordance with the new regulations. It's extensive, uh, policy that discusses what sexual harassment did, who could be the target, et cetera. And tonight will be the first reading of that. And I would also look for a motion to wait second.
So, we're going to take this promotion to accept pause.
You need a motion to accept pause.
A motion to wait, but it's second. Two seconds.
Two seconds. Okay, so we need a motion to accept pause, you can wait a second. Please.
Thank you, motion please. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Okay, Mrs. Piladi, intermanagers, and business owners.
The treasuries report for the month of August had a beginning balance of $55,146,734.32 and an ending balance of $49,246,542.50. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers, number 3539 through 3536, for the aid funds, and numbers 3546 through 3555, for the capital funds?
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Close. Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of chain orders as listed on the agenda?
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of surplus items as listed on the agenda?
Remove. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2018-19 contracts for ACLD Premier Learning Center and Long Island Select Healthcare?
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of resolutions to accept the donation from Abel Delai's for Beach Street and to increase the budget for the 2018 donation received thus far?
Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of the Delai's chief school physicians list? Is this in your backup, please? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. And can I have a motion for the approval of the building emergency response plans for 2018-2019? Remove. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. First.
Thank you, Ms. Fadella. Just two quick reminders. First of all, our, as we've announced before, our Facebook page is up and running. And we really have a lot of terrific things that have been posted recently reflecting all of the good work that is being done in our classrooms and with our students, also on the athletic fields and in the music realm of the arts, actually. So, if you have a chance, please do take a look. Our building teachers and our administrators have been terrific about forwarding the information to our webmaster. So, it's really going right now. Terrific. I'm very proud of the work that everybody is doing in that regard. And secondly, as we talk about music, I would like to announce that our band participated in the level state parade on Monday, and they placed second. So, once again, we are very, very proud of the work that our students and staff are doing outside of our classrooms, as well as inside.
And it's really quite prestigious, because only the elite bands get invited in the first place. So, coming in second is kind of like makes us the top of the top. So, congratulations to the marching musicians. It is like the playoffs, absolutely. Probably a better showing than my Yankees, uh... Any other items for board members to mention? Okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Testing, okay. Alrighty. Um, I have only three minutes. It's already reset it, because the microphone wasn't working. Okay. That's the first thing. We need to try to increase the times. There's just not enough time, and it's just not as respectful to the community as it could be. Okay, so... I want to follow up on a few things. So, we'll ask the questions at the end, since I don't have a lot of time. Um, first of all, for the record, I just want to state that I am for God in schools. I am for armed God. I am for God in schools. I am for armed guards in our schools. Okay? And if I'm coming across frustrated, it's because of the times. Please don't take it personally. I'll get to the questions at the end. But the reason I'm saying that is when the minutes were drafted up, my words were kind of misconstrued in a very vague way. And I know I spoke to Mr. Burns, and she did try to correct that, but it was still very vague. And that's why I pointed out what I am for. When you say something in a minute, and again, I know that you have a lot to do, and I know it's not intentional. However, when you have something that says, um, "Mrs. Hansel had concerns about armed guards and suggested for him to help educate people," it sounds like I'm afraid of them. Okay? I'm only afraid of people who have guns who want to do bad things. Also, I had mentioned something else about I am concerned about, um, God being in school. Here it is. "Mrs. Hansel shared her concerns about curriculum security, taking God out of schools, and the importance of teaching sensitivity training." So, yes, I am very much for God in our schools, not concerned that he's in the school. Okay? And I told you also that I would hope that all you would find a way to keep him active in our schools. But as far as I'm concerned, the best way we can keep our children safe is through prayer, through recognizing the sovereignty of the Lord. And I know it's a public institution, however, I can say that if you preserve Western civilization courses in our school district, we will keep God natural in the Constitution in our curriculum. The reason I say this is I know IV is a very respected and well-paid program in our district. But if you look at the mission statement of the IV program, not the teaching, not, it has nothing to do with teachers, nothing to do with training, but if you look at the actual, um, mission statements, yes, it's a global thrust, and I'm not against the world. I love the world. I want peace throughout the whole world. But what I am concerned about is a de-minimization of America. And that concerns me a lot. I feel that we are leader in America. I feel like compared to my older children's education about American history, I'm not 100% sure where we're going in the district with that. I know we have some great, um, courses, government courses, but I shared with you once before, some of the readings in the elementary level, middle school level was kind of negative to America. Feel sorry, you know, apologizing for our history, and I'm very concerned about that. The IV program, by its very merit, talks about equalizing America with other countries. Where I'm, this is my opinion, you know who's entitled to it. I feel our children need to be respectful patriots, recognizing that our country is the leader of the free world. Okay? That's my personal opinion. Where this concerns me on a more local level, I had asked why we don't have valedictorians anymore. My child, my children will not be valedictorians. I'm going to take a few more minutes, because of my microphone issue.
Let's try to wrap up.
I will try to wrap up, but like I said, that's just not respectful to the community members. My concern is that with the valedictorians... No, I'm just saying, I'm talking fast out of frustration. I'm not angry at anybody, but that is just almost impossible, three minutes. Okay? My concern is that I was told that because of the ranking of children taking classes that they could take a more rigorous course. My concern is that as the IV program is looking at countries as the same, I'm concerned we're looking at our children as the same. And we have to encourage individuality. Here's my questions. My questions are, I mentioned that the stickers in the high school highlighting sexual orientation, safe space for the LGBT community, which I respect wholeheartedly, but I asked if there could be consideration to revise them to reflect the true DASSA mission statement to protect all classes. So, perhaps an art project can be, the students can design a sticker to represent every single class. Why we're highlighting sexual orientation, I don't understand why. Because everybody's sexual orientation is important. And if you highlight something, you're going to get almost like a negative backward effect. It can backfire on you. Okay? And the studies do show that. And as far as the suicide rate, the more we hike, the more we go on and on about that, the more it highlights that issue for those children in that type of category. The other, the other question I had for you is, um, will the IV program be expanded to the middle school? Will the IV program be expanded even into the high school and the elementary levels? My other question is, can you... Oh, okay. Can we preserve if we have more Western civilization electives in the high school? And, let's see. And will we have armed guards eventually?
We're still with the last one. We have not made a decision yet.
Okay. That's the last time, that's fine.
We had just gotten the, um, report, I guess about two weeks ago, from the consultant that we hired to do the top-down review of security and security measures across the district. And in addition, we just hired a new director of security. So, we are now starting the serious deliberation process.
Okay, that's great. I also want to compliment, I had too many lectures ID at home. I brought it back the other day, and I was very impressed with the security being great and how it's had and stopping me, and I give you a lot of credit for that. So, like I said, I'm talking fast, because of the time limit. Um, I also want to compliment that I did notice, before you tell me to do it. I like the fact that you have a, um, during open house, I noticed we had a, uh, an area where you actually represented the military and service people who served. It's wonderful to have that, too. And what else I wanted to do? Oh, the one more thing is that I really would hope you consider changing the time at least to five minutes and also not requiring residents to give their address. Let me tell you why. The address on the pink card, I don't think residents should have to give their address. Not in this hostile world we live in. Okay? I'm never going to be afraid to speak. If I die, I die. Okay? Hopefully, I won't. Not going to. But my point is, less people are going to speak out if you make them put their address on their cards. And that's, I don't know, can you tell me why we have to write our address on our... What people have to know where we live?
I got the question.
I don't know what any reasoning was for it. I do know that periodically, we need to follow up with people and sometimes by providing us with that contact information.
I think it's also verification of West Islewood president, but obviously, we do that here also.
Sure. I remember that being mentioned before, Mr. O'Connor. We can always show a license, you know?
Do a little research on that.
That'd be great. Because I think more people might be worried. Because I know people have told me they don't want to speak because they don't want people throwing things at the house. Thank you very much.
You know, I, I, I think I'd be surprised if that got more people to speak. But personally, I don't have any, I don't have any need for any information myself. So, you know, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at it. Thank you. Well done. Uh, Mrs. Fadella?
Hi, I just had a question regarding... Regarding the new community service involvement program. I just became aware of it the other night after the high school open house. I'm curious as to why there was a change implemented in that... I'm curious as to why there was a change implemented in that, for you? Less community service and more involvement? Can, can you give me a little bit of information and understanding on that?
So certainly, one of the things that we're trying to do as we reevaluate everything that we offer for our student students is to ensure that they have the best chances possible to do what they want to do beyond our high school. And one of the things that we're finding is that element is very, very important to the college acceptance process. So I don't think it's actually more restrictive, it's actually more inclusive of many more things.
Well, that's, um, I'm just going to speak.
Yeah, the next one.
But like, kind of my issue that, um, that I would like to sort of drill down on is service, community service, and serving your community. I feel like other parents and people in the community that I'm talking to is being involved in the school and clubs and sports and intermural activities does not qualify as service. And I understand you changed the, um, committee or the requirement to say community service and involvement. But, but we started this community service, the idea of community service and having, you know, kids in the community serve their community is a very valuable and good lesson and a good standing that students should have. Um, and it takes them far, and if it's going to be put on a college application or the lesson in the morality of serving your community is fantastic. And I think we should be proud of the fact that we want our students to know how to serve the community. But I think this twist of creating community service and involvement has distilled and distorted the idea of service. You know, I, I'm a little concerned that we're sending mixed messages to our students in saying, if you play sport or if you join a school club, you will accumulate points that will be equivalent to someone giving up their time and volunteering at a nursing home or for a non-for-profit. And the way that the document reads is you get points accumulated to a graduation requirement.
I think your point may need to clarify this, because this was not meant to supplant the hundred hours of community service that would entitle that recognition by the time a student graduated.
No, but it says it's a graduation requirement. I'm focusing on the requirements. So you're requiring certain numbers of points per year, and in total of forty for graduation. But you're combining the, the combination of playing a sport, joining a club, being in an intermural activity alongside of taking your time out and serving, they are not one and the same. You're not, you're not combining apples and apples. And I think the message that we're sending to our kids is to meet that graduation requirement is, is a mixed message, and you're almost sending a message across that says one is just as good as the other. They're not the same thing. One is self-serving, the other is teaching how to be good community members and serve your community. So I'm, I'm confused as to why, listen, I get it, kids are busy. They have so much on their plate these days. And if it's too much for them to meet those community service hours, that we need to supplement it with the hours that they spend playing sports or being on school clubs, well, let's call it speed or speed and just say, your kids are too busy these days. But let's not send the message to them that that's service, because it's, it's not service.
So there's two components to it, the one being actual community service, which you, I, I agree with you, is separate and apart from involvement in the school environment, but perhaps we need to clarify some of it.
Which was not what was written in that document. It's a, it's a total add-in of points, and you can earn, I don't know, how many sports you play a year, you get two points per sport, you get two points per club. You can get zero points and serve your community. It, it's not the same. So that's what I'm asking you to look at, is do we want to be proud that we put our students out there and make them responsible citizens? Or do we want to say, well, they met some kind of requirement that makes us look good, that we have this community service and, you know, involvement program?
Maybe I can give you a call tomorrow, so I'm not sure I understand the question. I want to read the document again, and then you can agree together.
Okay.
Because I, it was never meant to, um, you know...
Place the, the...
It definitely, I mean, I've read it, I've had other parents read it, it's just...
So if it's, if it's not being easy in the vein which it was meant, we need to go back and look at the language.
Okay.
Because certainly we want to promote the idea that every child should be involved in their schooling environment, but for those that may not play a sport or be in, um, you know, the parade as part of our marching band, and they prefer to do hours of community service to pick or anything else, they still should be able to earn that requirement for graduation there, and still get the recognition for the hours. So I, I understand what you're saying. I want, let me go back and just...
Okay, because it does mean as though one could be called the other, that it's, you know, so I think it's a little vague.
We'll look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, where we will discuss personnel negotiations and litigation? To the conclusion of executive session, the board will review the public session in the district office boardroom and consider any items for which are voted quoth. All members of the public are of course welcome to the pen. The section will return to the public session. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.